To do.
Thank you.
Yes, John and I are behind glass. We can't throw stuff at it. Doesn't work. I'm glad that Marjorie has joined us. That's Dan's laptop. You know, when you log in, Dan, you can change the name. That's all right. One minute. Ready to go? Nikki, Mark, Steve, Melissa, and John. Other day, and he'll join like two after. We live on Facebook? All right, call the workstation to order. It's 5:59 by my clock. Yeah, six o'clock, good. First item on the agenda is the annexation update. Who's got this one?
Jack.
All right, Mr. Hendricks, my is yours. Can everybody online hear us okay? Thanks, Mike. There's your mic trap, Mike, John.
Good evening. In the packet, you had a staff report on the annexation update of the status of all of the annexation fronts that we're moving forward on. If you have any questions about those, I will certainly entertain answering any questions on that. If there isn't anything about the update portion, we can go into the draft policy.
Any questions for Jack? On the current?
I don't have any.
You have before you in your packet as well, a draft voluntary annexation policy. Wanted to highlight a couple of things. This pertains to voluntary annexation only, not involuntary. Involuntary has a completely different set of rules. It involves lawsuits and elections and all that stuff that we're working on in other matters. And involuntary annexations are driven by the board of all of them, whether it's this board or future board. So we don't want to get into what the policies would be because that would be up to the individual board in the future. Now, we can set a policy safely on voluntary annexation where individual property
He lost your mic, Jack. Do you want to just pull the cord from one of the other ones over to him?
Yeah, it certainly does. We'll start on that. If I see the green go away, I'll move to one of those chairs or something if that. So we've laid out a draft policy associated with voluntary annexations with a declaration of intent.
Yeah, say, just move over here.
This one works, it sounds like.
Yep.
With annexation priorities and policies all identified in this document, the hope that Cynthia and I have today is that you have had an opportunity to look at it. And if you have criticisms, questions, issues, or ideas, to get those to us because we would like to have a path forward after tonight to what and how we need to take the next step on the policy. So I'll leave it to you to ask any questions or any issues with the draft policy that you have before you.
Alderman Chevalier, anything? Alderman Atkins?
We got nothing.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Yulidoff?
Yeah, I think I'm good.
Alderman Server?
No questions. It looks good to me.
I mean, you got your P and Z folks and everybody out there that just says, go for it. So I think you're good.
With that being said, then we can draft a resolution for the December meeting that would adopt a voluntary annexation policy and then it would go into the board packet of policies. And from the development department standpoint, anytime anyone was interested in annexing, I would refer them to this to start their thought process.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Yes. So I can see, because I can't see there. Yeah, is that okay? Is that a problem? I thought I had muted it. I am so sorry.
Sorry, Marv.
I'm off. Sorry.
I'm gonna get you some gaming headphones. There we go. Okay.
That should help.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Next item is the Second Creek Bridge.
Mayor and Board, the information included in your packet kind of gives a history as to how the bridge sitting on the property that we own at the corner of 169 and Second Creek Road got there and is awaiting some type of disposition. Basically, and the history is outlined on the first page of the report. Really kind of wanted to bring to you all a discussion of some options related to where we should go with the bridge or what should happen next. Really, two obstacles and a subsection of one of those. We could reuse the bridge on a future project or to cross some body of water. It could be reused. Really swag guess is the cost to move that would be between $25,000 and $50,000. Potentially higher depending upon the location and whatever logistics might be required. Use on a waterway would also require a hydrologic study to determine impact on water flow and it would require a state permit. So if this is an option that the board would like to move forward in, we would need to make a determination as to what project, timing, and location. The second option would be to identify the bridge as surplus like we have done with a number of items and place it for sale. This could be accomplished through a bid process or by placing an item on GovDeals as we have with surplus equipment in the past. We have had inquiries in the past as to our plans for the bridge and there might be some interest out there. We would caution, not sure what scrap metal costs or scrap metal proceeds seem to have gone down recently. So we're not sure what might happen there. As the final piece with regard to disposition, representatives from Emory Sappensons, which is the construction firm who did the construction on the new bridge on Second Creek, has reached out in contact Chuck with regard to disposition of the bridge. They have indicated that they have a potential use for it on the project, I believe Chuck in Arkansas. And that they would, their words taken off our hands. They have made no monetary offer, but would be willing to take that and move it. So we are just looking for direction from the board as to next steps.
So my opinion is that if you assess once and they have a place for it, that's where it should go and just let us know where it goes. We can let the Historic Society know and they can update whenever they want to update. So I'll pass it on to the board too if there's anybody else has a different opinion or agrees with that. I'll start with Alderman Yulidoff.
I think that it should be a walkway from Heritage Park over the river that would connect the senior living area, the housing over there to the park. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I think the construction costs of doing a new bridge would probably be easier than trying to fit that one in that space, just from what we've done with preliminary engineering. But yeah, we've talked about that before. Thanks, Dan. Alderman Wilson?
I'm truthfully ready to get rid of it. And I think we look at Emory Sappensons first. And if they don't, then I would go to that other option of trying to sell it on that GovDeals.com.
Okay, Alderman Atkins?
Do we have to get rid of it? Unless we really need it?
That's what we're asking. I mean, do you want it to sit there on the line for another five to 10 years maybe or longer or?
I don't, I would rather sell it as opposed to give it away for free.
Okay. Alderman Server?
Did you say something about talking to the Historical Society about it? You were cutting out a little bit.
I just said that if we, you know, if it goes to another location, let's let them know the city it goes to so they can tell people, you know, because they want to, they're one of the ones who wanted to preserve it or make sure it was used somewhere.
Well, I agree with Marvin. If we're gonna get rid of it, probably ought to try and sell it if we can.
Okay, Alderman Chevalier?
I would like to do everything possible to try to keep it. So yeah, if there's, if there's some sort of a planned use that we could do with it, maybe the Historical Society has some ideas to throw out there and we can just look at that. Let's look at that. But yeah, if we can't figure something out, then we might as well just sell it.
They have no interest in doing anything. I mean, they, they don't have the funding or, I mean, I haven't heard from any of them on anything for quite a while on it. So it's, I think as we move forward with our Parks and Rec plan, I think looking at new versus trying to retrofit is probably the better option. If we would have kept it in place and built a bridge next to it and it would have served as pedestrian bridge when the Second Creek Bridge was built, that would have made sense. But trying to fit it into another spot is going to be engineering challenge when we have enough engineering challenges in town right now.
Can we just get like a helicopter to pick it up and drop it on the hospital?
Which one?
The old one?
Oh, yeah. That solved a problem for like a second and then we still gotta move it somewhere and then move the pile. But yeah. So Alderman Wilson, are you good with selling it and then seeing if somebody hits it on GovDeals, then go to SS?
I don't want to miss a window of opportunity with Emory Sappensons. If we wait and try to sell it, we could miss a window of opportunity on selling it and then we have nowhere to go with it. So I'm still more in favor of going to Emory Sappensons because it's gotta go somewhere. All the improvements we're doing across the whole city and then you come down the hill and you see that old bridge there, it's time it's gone, in my opinion.
If we were to go down the route of disposing of it, and that is the board preferred solution, we could reach out to Emory Sappensons, give them a final chance that the board has indicated they do want to dispose of it. Or are they willing to make an offer on it, which would be basically the equivalent also of putting it on GovDeals?
Yeah, because if we put on GovDeals, we're gonna start it at like a dollar anyway, right? Or a hundred bucks or?
We can start it in anything, but yeah.
Yeah, but they take a fee and that's the time.
If we, if we do that, if we go with this company and not put it out for bid or anything like that, I mean, is that going to violate any kind of?
I think the original agreement with them is they were gonna, we were gonna have to pay them to haul it away when they did the construction, right?
Yes.
So we're actually saving money because we didn't pay them to take it away.
Okay.
But we could also, I mean, we could put it on GovDeals and let Emory Sappensons know that we've put it there as another alternative. And we could do that as quickly as we would have declaration of surplus, so.
Can we do a 10-day auction?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
I say let's do that and just.
10-day auction. Do you guys, yeah. Everybody good with that? Steve, you gonna buy a bridge, put in your backyard?
So now what we would do, we would need to declare it surplus at the December 1st meeting and we would put it on GovDeals on the second.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Everybody good with that? Somebody's getting a bridge for Christmas. All right. You guys got what you need?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our CARES funding allocation.
Okay, we have discussed a number of times the information included in the packet. There's a lot of information there about our allocation and what we have expended our funds on. Reminder that these funds will need to be returned to, they basically they run out December 30th and we need to return those to Clay County if there are any that we leave unexpended. So really kind of to frame discussion on page 12 in the packet, I have outlined kind of the request of information that we're looking for and our recommendations and direction that we need from the board. There remains just under $500,000, $492,000 in the CARES fund at this time. That's what's resulting in after all the expenditures we've made from that $945,000 allocation. Staff strongly recommends that we consider the piece of CARES funding that allows us to reimburse ourselves for public safety costs. You'll note in the packet, all of the other communities in Clay County are utilizing that option basically to bridge the gap between what they have spent so far and what their total allocation is. Our payroll costs in the police department for the three months of the stay-at-home order, total $418,200. Our public safety costs since April 1st are $975,866. So we could reimburse ourselves anywhere in those amounts or less. What we would recommend, can you hear me okay? Are you all on Zoom hearing okay? Are you all having problems here? I am on top of. Does this help any?
Possibly, yeah.
Okay, I've taken off my mask. Get back into my thought here. What I want to make sure is that recommendation is not that we utilize those funds to pay ourselves for those costs, but those funds are recommended to be retained in our CARES fund for reimbursement for costs. Does that help on Zoom? Okay. Those, we would, I have to be straight on, they can't be turned. Let me grab my, so um the reimbursement to ourselves would stay in the CARES fund and we would recommend we draw down on those after the first of the year's expenses are incurred. What's outlined in the memo is if there's an ongoing need for utility and housing assistance, economic development grants. There may be reimbursement required to the general fund at some time for staff being out for sickness related to COVID, et cetera. We would recommend that that be reviewed. Any drawdown of those funds be approved by the governing body. So that's first recommendation. There are some unfunded or needs that have been identified within the community that we would like some direction on. We received a request from the Water District that's outlined in your packet for about $4,500. And we're looking for the, for direction from the board if they wish to fund that. If so, at what level? We also have had requests from the School District for assistance in equipment and other expenditures. They did make a submission to SEMA for FEMA funds. And I know that Wayne Kruger is on that and can answer questions on that. Their total request was just under $160,000. And they received not quite 30,000, it looks like, and they have remaining expenditures related to COVID of just under $133,000. So we can obviously ask Wayne questions on that, but that's an option for some utilization of funds. And then we've had ongoing discussion with regard to how much money we wish to turn back to the county. You'll note in the packet, it's our understanding that other communities within Clay County anticipate utilizing all of their funds. But if we wish to turn any back, we can plug that into the calculation as well.
Okay, so I'm gonna start with the smaller dollar amount first, the Water Supply District. Is everyone good with fully funding that request? Alderman Wilson? You're on game.
I am okay with it.
Okay, Alderman Atkins?
I agree.
Yulidoff?
I agree.
Server?
Yes.
Chevalier?
Sure.
All right, Water District, full request. Next item, School District, 132,63713 was the number I got from Todd this afternoon. So we wanted to round it out to 133 to make a little less writing on that. But so 133 is the request.
Wayne's on here, so just can he, Wayne, do you want to speak and just kind of talk about anything, challenges and things like that?
Absolutely. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity to, as I know it has been for the city of Smithville, this has been a very, very challenging year for us. And it gets more and more challenging every day as we move forward to continue to operate. You know, business as usual is not usual at all right now. We, you know, we continue to try to serve our community and our kids, but it's getting more and more difficult. You can see all around is schools that are starting to go back to more of a virtual model. All the costs that were previously mentioned, as previously stated, were submitted to FEMA for consideration under the Public Assistance Program. We started occurring costs in March of last spring and basically accumulated those costs since last March, including virtual learning, hand sanitizer, personal protection equipment, virtual teachers, et cetera. And again, we were under the impression that we would be funded. But FEMA changed on September 15th. FEMA changed the eligibility. And we're, we're not funded. We got about 32,000 funded and the rest was denied. Previously, under the original program, it was all allowable. But because we submitted after September 15th, we were not able to count those items. So again, anything that consideration would be much appreciated.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. So I'll start with the reverse order this time. Alderman Chevalier, 133,000 or do you have a different number?
That number sounds great. I feel that, you know, other communities are helping their school districts out with their CARES money and I believe we should do the same.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Server? You're on game.
Can't think of a better thing to use it for. I'm okay with it.
Thank you. Alderman Yulidoff?
I just had a quick question. In the packet, it shows a total of 268, 410. Is that the same number with this 130?
No, that is a direct allocation that they received from Clay County. The same time we got our allocation, each of the school districts in the county received an allocation and that is the amount they received directly from Clay County.
And we received that, excuse me, we received that in the last fiscal year and for everyone's knowledge, we use 100% of those funds to purchase one-to-one technology. So our kids would each have a personal computer for virtual learning, should we have to go there.
Thank you.
Then yes, the 130, 135, sounds, sounds great. Great way to spend it.
Okay, Alderman Wilson?
Before I comment, I think we're overstated by 30,000. I just did a calculation on what we originally got and what we spent. I think we only have $462,021 left. Cynthia, can you confirm that real quick, please?
I'll check it while you all continue to discuss.
Because my comment is going to be, if in fact we've overstated that by 30,000, I'd like to lower the school to 100,000.
Okay.
And I ask that from the standpoint with this new surge, we don't know what all is going to happen across the board. I understand the school's going to need more, which is fine. But if that's overstated by 30,000, this is where I'd like to do the reduction because we may have to do those small business loans again. We honestly don't know what we're going to be getting into again.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Atkins?
With this new surge that we all know is coming, I would rather be looking at money put into the school for protection of our kids. So do we have enough money allocated there or estimated on what could be happening in the next four to six months? Because you know it's gonna come a little longer and stay a little stronger.
Wayne, I think that's a question for you because or is that to get you guys to where you need to be for the future or is that?
No, no, the, the, great question and thank you for asking. The 130, the original quest, 159,15289 that was submitted for the program was for costs that have already occurred. They are not, other than supplies that don't run out. In other words, we've already purchased hand sanitizers, so it may last into the second semester. But, but 88,000 roughly of that cost is for virtual teachers. And we will have that reoccurring cost second semesters and that's not included in this. So we will have additional costs, but we don't know what the future will be. We anticipate that. We'll make it work, but it does not include any future cost.
I definitely don't want to leave no, you know, money on the table.
Gotcha. So yeah, I mean, the money that's left, I think we're, we're all kind of in agreement. I'll go back around the table in a second on we'll put that into a fund for us to draw down on for either housing assistance or business, small business loans again, or something else, like additional funding to the schools or whatnot. So I think we'll get to that. So Cynthia?
Alderman Wilson, I want to make sure I double check the math on this spreadsheet, which are total for city responses, 62834, 180,000 for city mitigation expenses, 141750 for small business grants, 26250 for utility and housing assistance, community needs, 61570 for a total expenditure of 473379. Our total allocation was 965400. That's how we arrived at the 49221, which, and I just double checked that math. You're muted? Alderman Wilson, you're muted?
Well, I see you're muted. And Cynthia is an alien.
Sorry. So it's wrong in the background up here. We're in the packet where it says 945400.
Oh, I got you.
I was using.
Oh, no, you are correct. 945 is the, I am sorry. I, yeah, we transpose that here. You are correct. Thank you.
That one. She's not here anymore. He must have studied math somewhere other than Smithville High School.
So that is 472.
Okay, 472?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
462. Right?
Yeah.
Alderman Wilson's math for tonight.
472, okay.
Yeah, it's 472. I just did that one twice.
Okay, 472, thank you.
I corrected my manual math here. So so then I would be okay with giving the school the full 130 since I know we have this oversight here, I guess in one way.
Gotcha. So 132, 63713, Wayne, that's the number you sent or Todd sent me. Good? Everybody good with that? If anybody is not good, this is your chance to speak. Wayne, have you let me hold up both sides? I don't know. It's on Zoom. Okay, you're good. All right, Wayne, we'll get you a check. It's in the mail tomorrow, Friday, someday. Anyway.
Thank you. Thank you very much. On behalf of the kids and staff, thank you very much.
No problem. And moving on, giving money back to Clay County. I think we keep it all in a fund and don't send them anything. I'll start with Alderman Atkins. What's your opinion? I think we keep it all in a fund and don't send them anything. I'll start with Alderman Atkins. What's your opinion?
Most definitely. We need all the help we can.
Hollywood Squares here. Alderman Sarver, you're next.
Yes, I I agree. Keep it.
Alderman, Alderwoman Wilson.
I agree to keep it, but I think we need to discuss how we're going to allocate the remaining.
Okay. Alderman Neil at all.
For sure, keep every penny of it that we can.
Okay, Chevalier?
Yeah, keep it. Let's try to get some more small business grants, utilities, assistance, things like that. Just get get some going with that.
Yeah, I would like to see the percentage of the original that we used minus the school, take the school stuff out, take the city out, or to keep the city in and see kind of percentage wise what we did.
I have that information if my math is correct here.
I don't trust your math tonight, so I'm just kidding.
Now that I've changed that one piece, if we do reimburse ourselves the full amount, and I can't see my spreadsheet very well, I've got the microphone. If I take the remaining, 472, $21, school reimbursement of 132617, Water District of 45,000, excuse me, 4500, that remains 334904 for our reimbursement to utilize the entire 472 of 21. Alderwoman Melissa Wilson, does that jive with your math?
Yes.
All right, good. So what that does, that creates if my numbers here reflect total allocation to the School District of approximately 40% of our expenditures. So we take that. Now, what I didn't do was take the schools out of that. We, the total amount for other expenditures, which were community response, that would be the small business grants, the community housing and rental assistance, as well as the small amount contributed to the Water District and the police, excuse me, ambulance and fire districts are just under 19% total. So about 20% total there with the $334,000 leaves about 35% unspent for future needs. That could be utilized in other ways.
Yeah, so the, can we just kind of throw a rough guidance out there of let's kind of allocate half towards small business and assistance type grants in the future and half towards salary reimbursement if we have people out. And if we have to adjust that plus or minus a little bit, we will as we cross that bridge, but I think just as a good guiding principle that half and a half was left, because that's about where we're at on everything else. So is everyone good with that?
So as long as we allocate it to something, then we don't have to turn it back, right?
Well, we'd have it in the.
By by saying we are going to reimburse ourselves for police salaries, we have allocated that. But my recommendation and staff's recommendation would be that we not just put that into the general fund to reimburse ourselves. I think many communities aren't doing that because they had pretty significant revenue losses. That's something we could look at as well as as part of that piece that we're looking at could be municipal corridor parks and recreation programs that that we've seen that revenue loss. Earlier in the year, we estimated about $80,000. In many communities, that's significantly more. So we we have not used it in that way. That's why staff has recommended we leave it in the CARES fund, and we draw that down as necessary. And I think whether it's small business grants, rental assistance, you know, some portion of that, and and there may be less portion for city. I just don't, I don't know. It'd be nice to have that general guidance. Staff's recommendation would also be that we wouldn't move any of that money or expend any of that without that being a governing body direction. Noted in the memo is about $16,300 that we have expended most of this more recently as we have had more employees had to quarantine, have exposures or have had to be home with kids who've had exposures. And we, and I'll report later, we have had three employees who have tested positive, so we've had employees out. Those are not, those were not anticipated expenditures when we we put our budget together. And th- those are the type expenditures we would like to be able to reimburse ourselves for.
Can I comment? I don't like the fact that this top one is worded public safety allocation. That to me means the police department. I would rather see us keep that in reserve as you've indicated, like people that end up with COVID and they have to quarantine instead of using their regular accrued sick time, that those funds would be set aside to help them through that process.
Alderman Wilson, that's exactly what we would anticipate to be able to use that for. The only thing is the allocation and reporting to the county to, for these to be qualified reimbursements need to be reported to the county as public safety salaries. That is qualified expenditure. The others aren't.
Like within the next couple of weeks.
Correct.
If we if we report those as public safety, we can still use it for something else?
Yes, because we will have received the money. We get to keep the money that way.
It's, but we're not dumping it, we're not going to dump it into the general fund, like some municipalities had, we're going to dump it, we're going to keep, we're going to put it in a CARES.
That CARES fund, that that $945,000 from the beginning was placed in CARES fund, and it would remain there and would not be moved to any other fund until the governing body approved those those movements.
There's no chance there'd be some sort of audit at some point to see where we put that money?
Well, that's that's what we're.
We put it back to public safety. They never asked later, so they will show us where you did that.
Well, we have the, that's what we're doing.
We did, well, we expen- we had 900, excuse me, we we have expended $900,000, we will this year in public safety salaries. And that is one of the things that we, tomorrow, we have a meeting with other communities in Clay County, and we'll have discussions with them as to how they're going to document and provide that information. We have had ongoing discussions with our auditors as well as to how how we account for that fund, those funds.
And the city attorney.
Yes, correct.
I think my concern with some of that, and I get it, but my concern is we are a community from a tax revenue standpoint, haven't been impacted like a lot of the other communities have. And our public safety expenses were already budgeted, so we've definitely got to keep that separate and be very careful on how we allocate that going forwards. I'm done.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Atkins or Chevalier Neil at all? Haven't heard much from you all. Marv's in the void. He's in the white. He's chilling. All right.
He's in a study.
Everybody good? Anything else? So entertain a motion, do adjourn, or it gets a little great for our next meeting? Or do we just roll into the next meeting? Seven o'clock, right? Yeah.
And because we have a public hearing noted for seven o'clock, posted for seven o'clock, we need to start that then.
And it's same Zoom though, right? They all dropped. Cool. All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye. All of us say no? We stand adjourned, see you at seven.
Does this microphone work as well? I'm going to move the other one if, yeah, okay.
It's clipping really badly. I just think the gain is up too high.
Just on that mic. We can turn it down, we can turn it down a couple of notches in the room, because it's still going to be just as loud on on Zoom. And we can adjust the mic volume on Zoom.
On my side, you guys.